Are these all new people?
Yes, no hires.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order of the Nottingham Select Board for Monday, May 6, 2019. And we will open our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with authority and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is manifests.
Okay, let me just look at what we got here. I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll manifest of May 7th and the accounts payable manifest of May 6th.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Manifest.
Yep.
Good. Okay. Inanimate.
You want us to sign all these?
Yes.
This is supposed to be a big, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make it more prominent. There you go.
All right, next item on the agenda, minutes. We have minutes from April 8th and April 22nd. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 8th and April 22nd, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. Action items from our last meeting. Do we have any outstanding items to look into?
Well, I think one of the things that we talked about last time doing was talking about goals.
Yes.
And I think we, or was that two meetings ago, we delayed it last time because there were only two of us, three of us?
It was our last meeting, yeah.
You were gonna circulate something, but I wish you'd all come up with your priorities.
Thank you, Steve. So glad we have a memory. So I don't know where you want to do it, I just wanted to point that out as a, something we had talked about.
As an outstanding.
Yep.
When, um, any thoughts as when we should have that nailed down by?
Before the midpoint.
Well, let's try to have that finalized for next meeting.
Okay.
That should be, you know, and then just, you know, everybody think about the things that we've been working on over the past couple of years, things that have come up, you know, all the various issues that we've talked about before and just make a bulleted list, prioritize them and send them to Chris and myself.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have a very strong opinion on it at this point, but can wait.
Okay. What do you think?
Sooner rather than later, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready, I'll be ready to go for next meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right. Reports from assigned boards and committees? Budget?
I did not attend, but.
I did. Yeah, I did. I went, you know, it was, it was their first meeting as a board, so a lot of it was geared for the new people reviewing policies and that kind of stuff. School presented their Q3 numbers. Right now, it looks like they're projected to have a balance of about half a million dollars without, you know, all of the Q4 stuff coming in. I presented our Q1 numbers, which is really kind of, you know, not a whole lot to talk about at this point. They had a couple minor questions, which I shared with Chris, but nothing, nothing big, so it was, you know, predominantly school board third quarter review and housekeeping for them.
Okay.
Do you indicate when there'll be another meeting?
Probably not till like the September, late August, September timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's when budget season kicks in.
No problem, no problem. That was fine. And I didn't, you're the backup, right? Are you the backup for Budget Committee?
Planning.
Planning. Who's backup for Budget?
I don't know if we actually assigned someone, did we?
Okay.
It was Tyler, wasn't it?
Thought it was Tyler.
Okay. Well, Mike called me directly and asked me to go, so I was happy to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it anytime.
Okay. Planning Board? Anything? Oh wait, Tyler's on Planning Board, so have they met since our last meeting?
They have a meeting Wednesday.
They must have met the same week you did, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
But I don't know what they were up to. They meet this coming Wednesday. And... There's a, something on Garrish, which I think might be a two-lot subdivision. And, uh, Edes Sarah is Guile Road, I believe. Nope, sorry, that's Route 4.
That's a backlot subdivision.
Backlot subdivision, yep. And Route 4, four or five lots on Route 4 are the two main things on their agenda.
Okay. What's next? Marston?
Nothing since we last talked, although we have folks coming in tonight.
We have some stuff lined up tonight?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And what else? Have I forgotten any boards, committees?
I mean, the CIP, but that's.
300th, anything, Tyler's on that one too.
Yeah. We haven't heard anything about 300th, no. Okay. Okay. All right. Town Administrator's report?
Mail is uneventful. The first pass of the county commissioner's budget came in, if you're interested in that. I haven't looked at it, but a 3.7% increase proposed before it goes to the delegation. We've got, uh, the bad news of the week is we've got fuel tank issues with our underground storage tanks, the highway garage. We have a tank of, for diesel and one for gasoline. We've, we've known, we've had water challenges with them for a while, but I think they're getting worse. We're starting to see some trouble with vehicles. We had fuel line issues with one of the, with one of the fire truck, pickup trucks this weekend. We've got an algae situation in that diesel tank. The water's getting into the tank somehow.
Fouling it?
What's that?
Fouling it?
Yep. Yep. I mean, those, those fills are, they're exposed, they're in a gravel driveway, there's plenty of ways for things to go wrong there. And it's, something has changed because we're starting to see things in the vehicles. We've stopped using it for, for fire, at least until we can get it treated this week. We've got a water and algae treatment coming this week to shock it, pump some sludge out of the bottom of the tank. But whatever, whatever is different now, it seems to be considerably worse than it had been. So we're exploring what our options are there. The algae situation, there's a chemical treatment available when you, you know, you can get a system that adds something to the fuel every time it's delivered and takes care of the algae. Doesn't solve any water getting into the tank, but that is a $6,000 a year proposition anyway, just for the algae side of things. So we're, we're, we're gonna treat it, you know, it's like you're paying for the chemicals essentially, we're gonna treat it this week and get it to the point, you know, get the fuel in it to the point where we can use it, but we're also evaluating what we need to do with it long-term. The, you know, anytime you mess around with underground storage tanks, it can, it can get expensive really quickly between the engineering and the inspections and the permitting and everything. We're permitted and we're inspected and we're legal, but we're, we're gonna evaluate whether or not we think about buying fuel at, at retail locations instead of being in the fuel tank business.
So is there concern about the physical integrity of the tank, or you just don't know?
We don't know. It's the fill, around the fill, where you fill it, we've always had water in that vicinity and have just kind of lived with it. It's never, you know, it's never been a big problem, but something is different than it was a couple of weeks ago. We had it inspected. We went through our, our state inspection regimen, I think December or January. So something, something's changed since then because it's showing up in the vehicles. So, uh, at the same time, Primex, our insurance provider, came out, did an inspection of the highway garage a couple of weeks ago, just a, you know, a courtesy suggestion list kind of inspection from the insurance folks. They'd like to see that fenced in. We've always thought about covering it. So we're, we're gonna come back to you probably in a couple of weeks with, with some options about either what do we do to get it, get it right and leave it there, or what does it look like to, to, you know, just move the fleet to buying it retail, which is, which is very common in places that have easier access to fuel stations than, than we do, but.
My only concern with going retail, which by the way, I am for to a point, is that we have to either go, depending on what side of town you're on, we'd have to go to Irving in, in Raymond, or the one in Lee, or even Northwood, it just doesn't seem like, I mean, unfortunately, our local convenience store doesn't have diesel, that would be a nice fix, but it's my understanding that part of the seal, I think when I last spoke to Sean on the tank, is not, I don't know, is degraded or what, maybe that's possibly where.
That could, that could be it, yeah.
So I know there was talks about putting a roof of some sort on top of it. Will that minimize some of it, or is this, or is it to a point now where?
Uh, I think that probably depends on who you ask, but where it's in, it's not in, usually you see those things in a, in an asphalt area that's got slopes away from the, you know.
And everything sits down on this one.
Right. It's, it's in a big pad that can shed water where it needs to, so covering it wouldn't hurt, but it may not solve it, so that's, that's one of the things we have to put some more thought into.
And where it's being inspected every year, I would assume the state would pick up on it if there was a leak of, or?
Yeah, it's, the, if it was, the tank, as far as we know, the integrity of the tank is good.
Okay.
But if water's getting in, you know, is something getting out, we don't, we don't have a reason to believe that it is, but, you know, and just having had it inspected.
If we were to abandon the idea of having our own fuel storage, is that in regards to the regular gasoline as well, or are we just talking diesel?
We would do both. If we, if we do a, you know, if we go to retail, we can buy gas. We, there's, there's one really common retail fleet card kind of program that a lot of municipalities use that works pretty much anywhere. So gasoline would be really easy. The hard part operationally is the off-road highway vehicles. That's, we haven't really dug down into it, but that's, that's the hardest part.
How old are the tanks?
Don't know.
You can also put a, a pump tank of some sort on one of the trucks to bring diesel fuel to these off-road.
Yeah, that's what we'd end up, we used to have one of those, John Fernal had one on the back of his truck, that, it was his personal truck, but that's how they brought fuel to the, to the pit oftentimes.
So if we weren't doing that anymore, are we required to pull the tanks?
Don't know that either. That's, that's the next question we have to ask, is what does it cost to get out of the business? Eventually, yes, you, you at least have to drain them, it makes sense to pull them out, but we haven't, we haven't gone down that far yet. We, we know we have a lot more homework to do, but that's, that's one of the questions we have to ask. I mean, having underground storage tanks right next to the river like that has never been great, but the operational concerns are gonna weigh on us. You know, be fined from police and be fined for fire even. Most of their fuel use is the ambulance, which is driving around all over the place, it's easy. It's highway operations that's gonna be the hard part, so. We don't have any answers, but I just wanted to let you know, we've got questions looming about it. Anything else you want us to investigate in that regard that?
Well, I mean, obviously I wanna weigh out all the options in regards to walking away from it. I mean, I understand the, the significance of the algae, and there's really no guarantee that this chemical is really gonna take care of that, right?
Well, I think you, you gotta have, paying that much for it, you gotta have some certainty that it'll work.
Well, I just don't wanna be throwing good money after bad into a situation that's gonna be deemed, you know, irreversible, I guess.
Yeah, the, perhaps the biggest downside is that if we, if we were to get out of it, say pull the tanks out, getting back into it for some reason is quite a proposition as well. You can imagine what getting a, getting permitted for the installation of one of these things is.
Right, right.
It would be very, very challenging, so it's not something we would do lightly. But it's, it's gonna get expensive to maintain it, I think, pretty quickly. I mean, we spend 70, 75,000 a year on fuel, so if we pick up another few thousand, you know, a $6,000 a year treatment program, we've.
Are we?
And that's gonna offset with the retail, if we have to go to the retail price, right?
Yeah, we're, right now, we're drilling down on what is the, what is the real discount we get?
Yeah.
It's not that significant.
Okay.
You know, the margins on fuel are so small that, you know, these fleet card programs, you, they take care of the tax exemption stuff for us. We don't pay a lot of the taxes that you do at retail, so we're comparing the real-time prices now to see what are we paying now versus what you pay at the pump.
But you can also call a heating home unit oil place to go out and refuel the off-road vehicles.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
That'll also be a little savings, not much, but.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, so you'll hear more about that in a couple of weeks.
Always the bearer of good news, Chris.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, on the bright side, the fishing derby is on the 11th, and there's plenty of room left, right? Plenty of fish left? And the new fire truck arrived Thursday night. It's very nice, the, I went over and checked it out, they were all very excited. It looked like a fire truck to me, I really don't know what I'm looking at, but they, they are putting it through its paces, found a few things with it, they've, they've been through it, found a few things to push back on the vendor about. They're gonna be this weekend next, they're doing field and classroom training on how to use it, and then we'll give up the old truck, moving the tools over and all those things takes, takes some planning and work. All ladders, all the, everything's gotta move. And then on the 19th, that's open house over at the, over at the fire station for EMS Week, they're gonna dedicate the truck, had a little, short little ceremony there on the 19th, so.
The ceremony would be, the dedication would be at 1:00 PM.
There you go.
Steve knows everything.
And I think that's all I have for you.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
What's the update on the repurposing of the police cruiser?
It's kind of pending, we're, we're, we don't get delivery on the new cruiser until late May, early June, was the last, last date I heard.
Are we taking it the same color? We don't plan on painting it, do we?
Not gonna paint it, no, we'll pull some decals off it. And Sean and Gunna were looking for amber lights and things like that, but.
So what do you think, July latest?
Yeah. Yeah, the, there's not much to do to it other than make sure it doesn't look like a police car.
And I noticed we have the, the 350 pickup back.
Yep.
Everything seems to be okay with that?
Everything's good, as far as we can tell.
Great.
Yep. Yeah, they were towing a York rake with it today, so.
Good.
It's working.
So we can get another season or two out of it.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Oh, good.
All right, we are creeping up on 7. Are we ready to talk about Marston, or?
Yeah.
No, Matt?
Oh, Matt, no, no, not Marston. You also got that last minute addition, Chris Albert's here, he wanted to talk with you too, you could do him before Courtney if you want. Or you can jump into the rec program addition, or the highway vehicle purchases, whatever you.
Come on, is she here? She's ready to go.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you want.
You ready, Courtney?
Yeah, I can go.
Okay.
She's staying for Marston, by the way.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, she's staying for Marston, too.
So I'm saying too, if someone else, doesn't matter. All right. Do you want me to just kind of run down what we're thinking? Okay. So I was, I've been in kind of communications with Chris Souza over at the school about possibly and hoping to present, to offer an after-school program this coming fall. They're interested in before care, but I'm, I'm hesitant to jump right on both right now, as staffing can cause a challenge, and I'll kind of get into that in a little bit. But basically, they are breaking contract with the current provider, and they are looking for outside companies to come in and present, and I figured why not present with a community-based service? Something that we've kind of been interested in for the last couple of years, but never really jumped, and I asked him what kind of hoops we needed to go through and sent him kind of an outline of a little bit of a proposal of what we would do roughly, and he was very on board and supportive, so. I've been doing more research in that and talking with other rec departments and what they do, kind of comparing and contrasting different towns. In particular, I've worked with Barrington, which is close by, and then I actually talked to Joe Manzi from Deerfield today, who's now in North Hampton, starting another after-school program there. But basically, so it's, it's very normal for a rec department to kind of go in that route, although we're not in the childcare industry, we, that is a need in our town, and something that we've expanded our summer camp programming and seems like it would be a really great fit to kind of have that year-round service for the same families that we cater to. That's pretty much that in a nutshell.
Was it the school that was looking to break away, or is?
The school was, yep, and actually, June 5th, they're, they're looking at kind of getting a couple companies, some big time, bigger, bigger name organizations in to kind of present, and Chris was kind of hoping that we could also present that day as well, if that was something that you guys thought would be a good idea.
So what you're looking for tonight, Courtney, is just kind of a, okay from this board to just kind of not do it, but to have further dialogue with the school about what the requirements are?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and talk a little bit about, Courtney and I have talked about this, so this is why I'm prompting her.
Yeah.
Talk a little bit about, you know, the synergies between what you're doing with the programs that you have now and, you know, the continuity for the kids who are in both programs, as well as kind of like how the financials work out.
Yeah, so this, for us, again, it's the same, it's the same families that we're catering to, same families that need this after-school care, same families that need the, the summer support as well. So what that could do for our department in particular is help us with staffing. A lot of these kids that work for us that are in high school, college, look for the year-round kind of jobs, this is a very easy way to get them more hours. Financially, this would go out of rec revolving, just like summer camp, it would be self-sustainable. What we bring in is what we pay our, our people with. That would shift a little bit with our department, as the assistant job would kind of take on more responsibility, so some of her salary would come from this as well. But it's, kind of works together. But mostly for staffing, it would work, you know, perfectly if we could get some of those younger kids who are there now in and, and working, you know, year-round, if they're interested in that.
You don't foresee a significant bump in like insurance costs or anything like that, do you?
Nope, so we did, I talked to Primex as well, and they said it's just like any other program that you would run. The only advice they gave me was creating a contract between us and the school and making sure that each party knew what we were responsible for, and that's something that we'll do with summer camp now, moving forward as well, because we have summer camp over at the school too.
So is that a yearly contract, or would you be looking at like a four, five-year type contract?
I'd be looking long-term. Yeah.
Would you try it out short-term at first, just to make sure that?
Of course, yep.
The honeymoon wasn't over?
Yes, and making sure that staffing would be, you know, sustainable and it's not always a constant turnover, that kind of stuff, but I would assume we would start small and. small. And according to Joe, he was like, you know, in Deerfield, they started with seven to ten kids, and then boom, to a hundred and forty kids after school. And right now, at the ARC program, they have about thirty kids, and that's because they have constant staff turnover.
Yeah, and a lot of kids don't go every day. Some kids go two days or three days or something like that. There has been some dissatisfaction with the program recently, and I think obviously that's why they're going out and looking for it. How do you think, like, if we went forward with that, and, you know, you're ready to take on the afternoon, but not the morning, what do you think, how would they handle that? The school, any idea?
Just the afternoon?
No, yeah, if, what would they do with the morning if you said, yeah, we want to go forward with this, but we want to start with just the afternoon?
I'm not sure what would happen. That's not, we haven't really talked those detail yet. I know that before care was one of the top selling points and something that they're interested in. They don't have that currently.
Oh, they don't have it now?
They don't have it now. So, that is, and I have, you know, I've got, I've collected framework from other places of what they kind of do for staffing and pricing, but that's a hard time of day to sell to somebody to come in and work.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if I'd promise that right away. But something we would be more than happy to look into, as far as it means.
Is there a demand for before?
There's been talks. We open summer camp around 7:30, and that's, sometimes people have concerns with that's too late, and that's even a rush in the mornings. So, we're kind of tossing that back and forth. That's a long day to have summer camp open from 7:30 to 5:30. But, you know, with after-school, with before care, that same need is there. Those same parents have to work, so, get their kids to school. So, definitely something we'd look into. Again, that's a hard person to sell on, on that kind of hours. But if we can get the right fit, I think it's doable.
Yeah.
What's your staffing contingencies like, like to make sure that there is somebody there in the afternoon if, you know, kid's car breaks down or something on the way in?
Yeah.
You know, there's got to be somebody there.
Right. So, kind of how I envision it is, we typically do a one-to-ten ratio, which is a little bit lower than normal, just because we like to make sure that that staff-to-kid ratio is good, and they have sites on all ten kids that they're in charge of. But we would hire a couple more. Been able to do that with summer camp, with kind of limiting part-timers to a couple of days a week, but having the flexibility to kind of shift them over. And this year, I've actually hired a lot of young kids, a lot of fourteen and fifteen-year-olds that are looking for that work, that kind of came up through the program, that are ready to work all day long, every day in the summer, which is awesome. But we don't want to burn them out. So, that if we have a crazy amount of, you know, kids who aren't looking for that work, and they are that young, you know, obviously, that's more supervision on our end. We'd like to get a supervisor who is an adult over there on site, but have that supporting staff being there, being flexible, and able to get back and forth when they need to. So...
Would you carry over that concept of junior counselor? Like, you know how you're using junior counselors for summer program? Would you kind of like leverage that over there as well?
Yep, absolutely. For this year in particular, for summer camp, we took seventh and eighth graders back to volunteer, just because of, you know, that's other reasons, but it didn't really work out. But that same age group, which is onsite anyways over at the school, would be an awesome opportunity for volunteering and getting that experience with the kids. Also, another training opportunity that we could give them. A lot of these rec departments do group training days with actual kids, and we've never been able to kind of time that right. And it's a perfect opportunity...
That's cool.
...to kind of get those kids in there to volunteer, fill out our volunteer paperwork, make sure they're all set, and kind of see how they interact, but as a volunteer for the after-school program. So, definitely something that we could work on, and definitely easy, if, easy to manage if it's done right, so...
And so, right now, it looks like there's, the attendance at ARC is twenty to forty kids, depending on day of the week, time of the month.
Yep.
How many kids can comfortably fit in that cafeteria?
The capacity is a hundred and sixty. So...
Really?
Yep. So, we could go, we could go big if we needed to.
Yeah.
And just, that's all, of course, depending on if we can staff that ratio well.
Right, right.
But, yeah.
And that's what I was getting at. Do you, you know, what are you going to do if it takes off beyond your expectations?
We'll hire more. Yep.
It'll have a natural cap, in that...
Yeah, yeah.
They'll only accept whatever they can swallow at any given time.
Yeah.
I don't ever see it getting to a hundred and sixty kids either.
Nope. I don't foresee that. And for Barrington, and I know they've, with, you know, certain circumstances this year, they fill up every year, all the time. And there's a couple of departments in this area that also fill up, and it's about a hundred kids. So, the need could be there, and I'm not sure if that's going to be that high with us. We hit about a hundred, hundred and one, about a hundred and forty signups for summer camp last year, so that number is not crazy.
And do you envision doing like ad hoc attendance? So, if somebody's family's got something going on one day, and they just need to drop the kids somewhere for an afternoon with their buddies?
Yeah. We'd hope to do a flexible schedule. We've got to look at the specifics and that, but we do a daily rate for summer camp, so I don't see why we couldn't do something like that for this program as well. But that flexibility is a huge piece of why I think we get so many kids in the summer, is that you can drop them off Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the next week, change it from Monday to Tuesday if you have to. So, there is that piece. And if it's, you know, we have a policy in place that payments are due Thursday. Any changes made before that Thursday, you're good to go. That same concept would move right into this program as well. Keep it consistent. That way, people don't have a million things going on in their head, and they can keep it straight, so...
Right. Good. Any other questions for Courtney? Anything? Okay, Matt's not here yet.
So, I just, what she's looking for is us to give the nod and the yes, that she can pursue the conversations.
I can support that.
Yeah, me, too.
Awesome.
Explore it, see where it goes.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys, so much.
Yep.
Good.
Anybody heard from Matt?
Yes, I did. He said he would be here about 7:30. His flight was delayed. Yeah.
Okay. And that's for Marston?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. We can shuffle this around a bit, then. I think, Mr. Albert, if you're ready to come up and...
Thank you for, Chris, thank you for getting me here. Again, Chris Albert, Thirty-Six Stage Road. I represent DJ Fowler in the back of the room. Again, we're in the private road world, and I just want to kind of recap what his situation, and he's been requested by Dale, your new code enforcement officer, to get a variance to build his house off Highland Road. So, I'm trying to think, I started scratching my head. I'm like, I've never heard of such a thing. I was the building inspector in this town for seven years. I've lived in this town for thirty-two years, and I've done numerous building permits and renovations for camp lot people that have never been requested to get a variance. So, I started going through your documents. So, in August 27th of last year, you guys talked about building permits on class-six roads, and then the grandfathering of pre-approval on private roads got brought into this way. Then, September 10th, I guess you guys finalized your documents. So, the board passed your private road policy, which I guess is part of it, or not part of why I was denied. I'm not too sure. Trying to read through this. But I'm kind of concerned, I went through the zoning hearings since this time, to about two or three months after that, and I found about two or three cases where people were made to get a variance for building on these grandfathered lots of record. They were all approved five-zero under variance. So, it doesn't seem like it's a big deal. But again, he was lucky enough to get on the docket for the variance that day that he issued his, he was trying to get his building permit. Otherwise, it could almost be two months out sometimes. He's not requesting to have an attorney present, but typically, I've done probably fifty zoning hearings in my lifetime, always with an architect and attorney, costing thousands of dollars for variance. We take variances very seriously. And I guess, I guess this is more of informational. I don't know what triggered it. I know Chris, you know, him and I have been talking slightly back and forth, but I guess, is there any thought process from the board on why, again, when you look at zoning and land use laws, when you look at, you know, my subdivision was created in 1972. When I look at the subdivision rules that were created in 1973, and our zoning ordinances that were created in 1980, we've always held these camp lots as grandfathered lots of record, and you even have it in your zoning requirements that they're grandfathered lots of record. So, I don't, I just, I want to know for the future, for my next clients that are wanting to do projects on camp lot, and for my client that's going to go for a variance in the middle of May, what the thought process is by this board, and what changed over the last thirty years that I've been here. I mean, again, I don't expect answers tonight. I mean, this is kind of new to you, you know, jumped on you guys, but I'm just curious where we're all coming from. Again, I understand the camp roads, again, I was the building inspector when this whole emergency road thing came out, and it was far from our minds with the board of selectmen and myself as building inspector, code enforcement officer in the nineties to take over any of these roads. Taking over the camp roads is the worst thing in the world. Was it Lakeside Drive was finally taken over a couple of years ago? That's crazy. I drive on Lakeside Drive, and I'm taking my life in my hands when I start driving those roads, and that's your liability. How that ever happened, I know we had a Warren article just this March, on one of the town roads that got voted down, which I was in opposition to. And again, it's fine that they're grandfathered lots, but you have to understand that these lots were created before zoning, before town of Longingham had these ordinances with two-hundred feet of frontage. They're recorded at registry. People are buying lots, paying face value of hundreds of thousands of dollars for these camp lots to build their homes. I've gone through the proper processes of getting a state septic approval, a state shoreline permits. He's at Architectural Designs Dunn. So, I'm just kind of curious on what the board's thought process. And again, I don't expect an answer if you don't have one, but I leave it to the board of just, it's, it's just, you shouldn't be creating variances that are going to get approved. It should go through a special exception process, or some other type of process, through maybe through the selectmen, not always thrown over to the variance appeal process. Because depending on who the abiders are, and what the variance people are that day, if that variance gets denied, that's another big legal challenge for that homeowner. Take it for questions, or...
Yeah, so just bear in mind that we're, you know, we're just hearing this now.
Right, yep.
We're not familiar with the specifics of that case, that application. So, I don't, you know, I don't even know, the board doesn't know what was the variance that was requested, and what exactly is it that you want us to explain?
No, I guess is, you know, this whole, this new, all-new article, well, he was denied because Article 2C1A, which seems like the pivot of all of these denials, is that he's got an approval, he doesn't have two-hundred feet of frontage on a class-five road, which has been the case, what I've seen on the zoning articles from last year, a couple of cases, they all have the same thing, is they don't have two-hundred feet of frontage. But again, two-hundred feet of frontage was created in the eighties. It was before zoning. So, I guess that's my issue, is, again, Dale, the building inspector, code enforcement officer, works for you guys. Again, you're the executive branch of government. You know, you guys all know how we've split up our little planning board, zoning board, and all that. And I just want to bring it to your attention that if it's something that's going to continue, the selectmen and the planning board really need to look at the requirements of a variance, and whether or not a special exception. We deal with it all the time with the state legislative process. If the different legislative processes at the state are giving waivers all the time, then they need to look at rewriting the rules, because a waiver or variance should not be just granted haphazardly. There should be a rational nexus behind it, through science and best management practices, whatever else. But again, it's just something to think about for this board.
This property's on Highland Ave?
Highland Ave, yep.
And is it, is it a class-five, class-six?
It's a private, it's a private road.
Okay.
And again, it seems like with your new ordinance, there's been numerous cases now with the zoning board. They've all gotten approvals five-zero, from what I've seen. So, you really shouldn't be just making people get a variance and getting approved, because again, it is a legal timeframe. It takes time and money. Some of them bring attorneys, some don't. But, you know, a person does all his documents, comes in to get his building permit, and he's denied and delayed for possibly two months, I guess my question is, you know, why? What's the thought process of this board for kicking projects out to require a variance? Again, living in town for thirty years, we've never, I mean, Charlie was a town administrator back a few years ago, and, I mean, myself, you know, when I was building inspector. But I've done six projects on this town. I've never needed a variance for a building permit on a class-five, a private road. So, it's something new to me, and I'm just trying to rationalize what your thought process is, and so...
Did you have something you wanted to show me?
Well, I can shed some light. I can probably shed some light on what the board's thought process was when it put the policy in place last year, which is the new piece.
Yep.
And I've been on the periphery of this case. I've talked with Dale about it on the fringes, and I, so I have some familiarity with it. The pre-existing lot, it's been there forever. It's got planning board approval as a, whatever it is. I don't know. I haven't seen that actual document.
Right, yeah.
That gets you out of dealing with this board for a building permit. State law says if you have a, if you need a building permit on a private road, you need to get a building permit from the board of selectmen.
Not necessarily, though.
In this case, no, because it's, it had planning board approval prior. So, that's not a piece of your case at all. You're not coming before this board for a building permit. You don't need to. That's, just doesn't apply for this lot. The variance question, in the variance, it says you have to have frontage on a lot. It says you have to have this kind of setbacks. It says you can build this high. It says you can build X and build Y. The ordinance is pretty clear that you need to have frontage on a class-five road. This lot doesn't, so you have to get a variance. And that's same, that's the same position that a number of lots have been in in the last couple of years. I think that came up last year, in that we now have two pieces of approval you're supposed to have. The ordinance needs to be fixed, and the planning board has identified that little bit as something that they want to change. I think it'll appear on the ballot next year. But the idea that you need a variance for frontage on a private or class-six road is kind of duplicative of what the select board has to do. I think the planning board might have even taken that out last year if they had time. They just didn't. So, they, I think they agree with you, in that you don't want to create regulations that just get automatically overturned with a variance. Doesn't make any sense. And it's a burdensome for the property owner. I think the ordinance is going to change this year to solve that.
Right, I understand that. But again, these were subdivided through planning board approval before the two-hundred feet of frontage even existed. So, I mean, I'm hoping legal counsel worked on that. And I guess my other question is then, I was only denied for two-hundred feet of frontage. C is two-hundred and two-hundred billable square, three-thousand, thirty thousand square feet of contiguous area. So, again, you didn't, again, it's all in there.
Is it all on 2C1, the frontage and the...
No, it's C. He only labeled it 1A, not C.
1A is frontage, right?
Frontage, but not C, which is the two-hundred by two-hundred billable square. So, like...
So, you're not being denied for that, right?
But I don't have it. So...
Okay.
Again, I worry with, see, I worry with a lot of building inspectors and code enforcement people when they write, for me to go to a variance, I need to be denied. So, the procedures that you have written are wrong, that you want me to, you made him actually apply with the zoning board application at the time. That is not, your procedures aren't correct in how that works.
The only way you can get a variance is if you've been denied.
Right. So, I can't, I can't have an application and a denial. You need to deny me, then I have to get my application.
Yes.
So, if you read your little checklist that you've done in that format, and you're, if you read through that, your little checklist, the third, the fourth, third option is zoning variance application at the time of submitting my application for my building permit, which doesn't, it's the cart and a horse.
Well, I think the hope there is to try... Well, I think the, the, the hope there is to try and speed the process up for the, for the owner, where you know it's going to be required, if you don't have the frontage, I don't have that.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
I haven't read that in a long time, but, the, the objective with that policy was to make it as painless as we possibly could, following both the state law and the ordinance, and we know it's unpleasant, and it's because of that two-track approval process, that nobody, I don't think intended, but that's, that's what's written, so, hopefully the ordinance changes next year and streamlines this whole thing.
Well, I hope, yeah.
You're stuck, you're stuck.
No, I mean, we'll fulfill it, I don't, I don't see it an issue, I, I guess I just worry about the people that come next, because there's, I don't know how many lots are left in this town to be developed, and the camp lots, I've, I probably was the building inspector that approved, you know, twenty to thirty of them over the seven years, and between Peter Rau, Chris, and Paul, I mean, Paul, this was never an issue with Paul Kobe.
Well, we, we, we learned early last year of, so, is it 67439, or whatever it is, we, we kind of became aware of it, we had been not following the law for a very long time, around the Board of Selectmen's approval of building permits on private roads, and we went around and around with counsel, and, yep, you're right, you haven't, you haven't been following the law, so that's what prompted that.
Okay, so you, so you feel that this statement is more of the Class Six road-type, Class V road issue of the 674 item, so, so Dale has just taken upon himself, I just don't know whose direction Dale is working under, because he should be working under the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, he's, he's identified something that doesn't fit within the ordinance, and he's denied a building permit as a result, right?
Okay, well, I'm just concerned that he mentioned A, but not C, and I don't want, you know, and again, a lot of times what happens, if I don't do all my I's and T's correctly, dependent of what, if I'm going to say for a variance for the planning board, then the planning board can come back and say, the building inspector did, gave me the wrong items, and I've got to go back six months later, we, I've had it happen in other communities where, you know.
Well, you're, you're set up with a denial and an, and an appeal date for the zoning board to get around that denial, right?
Right, yeah.
So your path is clear to you, in terms of what you need to do to get a building permit?
Well, I'm trying to bring this to this board and to you.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to go back and look at the thing you just pointed out, I'm not aware of the, the 1A and the 2C thing, I haven't read your particular case, but.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, we were approved by 1A, but when you read C, it also talks about the two hundred by two hundred billable square, and the thirty thousand, I mean, that should have been listed, unfortunately, DJ was frantic trying to get this thing in, and we were on the phone, and, at the time, and he, he actually did, I mean, usually when we do a variance application, usually an attorney writes it, again, it's, it's that much of a legal document, so again, it's, it's quite an expense, I mean, I did one in North Hampton, which we got approved, but we probably spent two or three thousand dollars that night, just between the architect, the attorney, and, and the consultant.
Yeah, we, we totally see that, we're, we have written that whole thing to try and help people get through that with as little headache as possible, but we still have to follow, the building inspector can't pick and choose where in the ordinance he's, you know, he's going to look the other way, in a.
Well, yeah, but it looks like he looked the other way when he didn't do C.
That may, that may be an error, I don't know, I'm going to have to look at that piece, but the frontage thing is pretty straightforward, you don't, you don't have the frontage, it's in the, it's in the ordinance?
Well, but again, my plan was plan, approved by the planning board in seventy-two, the ordinance didn't come into effect until nineteen eighty.
If you wanted to build a skyscraper there, would that be okay?
No, it's not.
Okay, so if, you can't have a skyscraper in the ordinance, we would deny that, too.
But again, we would, yeah, that's a height ordinance.
Right, but if, it's in the ordinance, the building inspector's going to enforce it.
So, but that's an interesting question, so there's no grandfathering?
Well, actually.
Anything prior to the ordinance?
But when you read through two, which talks about setbacks, and I was actually on the planning board that helped write it, and we talked about twenty feet for non-conforming lots, the property line setback for these camp lots is twenty feet, and it actually sets in there twenty feet for grandfathered, non-conforming lots, so we have language in there that we've already talked about in the nineties, when I was on the planning board, that there are grandfathered lots of record that don't apply, and, and maybe, full on me, back in the nineties, where I didn't include the frontages and all the other aspects, but what we did is, we recreated, you know, the less than two acre grandfathered lots, they don't need to meet the fifty-foot property line setbacks, so there is already language in there, it's, it's just, it's a hard way to travel, that the planning board should have been able to just correct, and, and not put these people through unburdened economic time and delay.
Your message is a great one to bring to the planning board as they get ready for the following year, because that, we see stuff just like this routinely.
Well, again, I already found, there was a hearing on September eighteenth, and one June nineteenth of last year, and that's, I stopped at that as far as reading through all the minutes, but.
Yeah, ZBA did a building permit on a private road three weeks ago, there's, needs to change, the ordinance needs to change to ease that burden, definitely.
So I think.
Sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to, I was just going to point out that, you know, again, as Chris mentioned, this came about last, early last year, where we became aware that we have to have a role in this, but I don't know that anybody on this board, maybe you, really understands, you know, the implications of being involved in this, and probably need, we all need to probably get more knowledgeable on this.
Yeah.
I know I've developed properties on Class Six roads, and it is a chore to go to the selectmen, there's a lot of releases that have to be recorded at the registry, that if your house burns down, we can't get there for fire suppression, that's your luck, and, a lot of times they do get granted, and, and even converting a Class Six road over and, and being it developed, it's, it's past us, the select board has to be like a town meeting at that point, to be brought up to standards, and, there's a lot of Class Six roads out there in New Hampshire.
Is this a new lot, or is this, I mean, is there, is there a camp on this lot?
It's a vacant lot.
It's a vacant lot?
That the abutter owned and sold to my client, he didn't, he didn't want to keep it as a buffer anymore, but again, it was approved by the planning board in nineteen seventy-two and recorded at the registry, yeah, so there's, and then, if you look at some of the RSAs as far as development, all the other, the other two lots have houses on them, so, this is like the last, and it's, it's a beautiful lot.
So, yeah, as, as Chris said, the planning board has identified this ordinance as needing some work, and I know that for a fact, because the year prior to the election, I, I sat on the planning board for the, for the select board, and it was discussed, so, I know that it's something that's on their radar, so I would suggest, I mean, your, your experience has given you a handle on this subject matter, probably far better than me or any of us sitting up here, I would absolutely bring that to the planning board, do you know Dirk Haste?
I know Dirk very well.
So Dirk is the.
I used to work with Dirk.
Yeah, so he's the chair of the, of the planning board, and find out from him when they are expecting to tackle this issue, so you can sit there as a subject matter expert, and advise them on how to streamline the process.
When you read through some of the minutes, it talks about the select board meeting with the planning board to fix this, and that's why, it's always kind of, and that was, that was, you know, September, August of last year, though, just didn't get it happening, all right, that's, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Is Matt here?
Yeah, yeah, he was here, he, like, he just walked out for a second.
Just stepped out?
Yeah.
And I'll get his laptop, he'll get it.
Oh, all right, um, do we, how much?
There's two brand new houses on that, that are right down the street from where this guy's trying to build his house, and those houses aren't even five years old. And they went through the same process, obviously, to get it approved, that what he's supposed to go for, but.
Newer subdivision, I think, I don't know, I don't know the sites, but.
No, but I don't.
Same concepts, yeah.
Yeah, they're literally right, they're right there, two brand new houses, starting five years old, maybe.
Yep.
So they already went through the process that he has to go through right now in order to get that building, which is a, hey, I understand where it's coming from.
Yep, he's not wrong, at all, it's, it's owners, yep.
All right, do we want to talk about the highway vehicle purchases while we're waiting for?
Sure.
Matt to get organized?
So, you got from us a collection of stuff, since town meeting, and Sean coming on board, they've gone back through the, the layouts for these things, the excavator first, they drove or used, I think, five or six different models, and, in refining their final choice, have decided on the CAT, the, they had, a lot of them came to our pit, and they used them there, they went to use a couple of them somewhere else, the, the CAT is a little less than what we had originally anticipated spending, so, they're looking for 137400, including the trailer, instead of the 155 that was approved by town meeting, it's essentially the same machine, capabilities, different manufacturer, I think one of the, one of the accessory pieces might be different, but, they've, they've, they've been comfortable with the CATs, got a good reputation, and so, they'd like to spend less than they could in this regard, any, the remaining seventeen, eighteen thousand will just remain in the fund balance, that are, that appropriation was to come from fund balance, second vehicle is the dump truck.
What is the actual name of this vehicle?
It's an excavator.
I don't know, you got a name for it?
Caterpillar.
Caterpillar?
Yeah.
Caterpillar Tractor Company?
Yeah, there's a, there's a model number.
308.
Uh, I don't know, Caterpillar, I, I can find it, 308, Caterpillar 308, 308.
Thank you.
Um, second, the dump truck, Sean has suggested a number of changes in the setup, the, the truck itself remains the same, still a Mack ten-wheeler, but identified a number of things that will either make it more versatile, or last longer, I laid those out for you, they're not all required, they're, they're things we can pull back from if we need to, they do push the price over what was appropriated, we can only take 225 out of the highway fund, the truck with this setup comes in at 237, so, what I have suggested is covering that twelve thousand with SB 38 highway funds that we got a couple of years ago, those were one-time appropriations from the legislature that have to be used for highway purposes, we have about twenty-six thousand left from that appropriation unspent, so the net effect of this is, of these two together, is there's, there's twelve that remains in the fund balance, and twelve that comes out of the SB 38 funds, give or take a few hundred bucks, we'd lose a little bit of flexibility with that SB 38 money, and that it, you know, we could have used it for something else, so that's the, that's the cost.
What could we have used that money for?
Any, anything highway-related, we used the bulk of it for accelerating the reconstruction of Lakeview Drive, that was, we used, we used up most of it in, in doing that faster than we otherwise would have, you can use it for anything highway-related, it's really pretty open-ended, any, anything that falls into the highway, anything you can use gas tax money on, same, same thing, so, vehicles, repairs, materials, bridges, roads, you name it, it's, it's pretty open-ended.
What was the, the balance there, we weren't earmarking that for anything?
We, we had it in the mix as maybe we apply it to Ledge Farm this year, that was the open piece that, so that, that is the, that's a trade-off, you, you, you have a lot of flexibility with this SB 38 money, that's the, that's the beauty of it, it, it's kind of outside the normal appropriation process, so, you could, you could do anything you wanted with it, and we kept it dry for this year, thinking we'd use it on road construction.
Yep, does it have an impact on Ledge Farm if we?
It won't, we don't, we don't know the numbers on Ledge Farm yet, but, the numbers are so big that twelve thousand isn't going to push one thing, you know, it's not going to make something happen a year later than another.
Yep.
Right.
So what is the vehicle, the actual name of this vehicle?
It's a ten-wheel Mack dump truck.
Thank you.
So how do these differences compare to what we originally scoped out?
The, the biggest dollar ones are the stainless steel dump body, which I think we had dreamed of, but didn't, didn't put in the original setup spec, and the hydraulic pump, Ben, maybe, and Ben, Ben, maybe you can explain the difference in these hydraulics better than I can.
Well, hydraulic system, what Sean was proposing is it, it moves it to the front of the vehicle, as opposed to near the transmission, if the hydraulic system was to go, you risk blowing the transmission at a tune of twenty-five thousand dollars, putting it to the front reduces the risk of damaging the transmission should the hydraulic system fails.
Does it jeopardize the engine?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you, that was much better than I could have done. Slightly another foot, another foot on the wing plow, cold doors in the dump body, we, none of our trucks have the little doors in the back of the dump truck that you, you see asphalt coming out, none of our trucks have those features, we don't, we don't have that capability, we don't have the capability to do patching work on asphalt, really, I mean, we have to use smaller trucks to do it.
What is the cost difference on a stainless steel body to a steel body?
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Now, reason for the stainless steel body is we do not have a wash pit, wash bay of any sort, if you were to go and inspect some of the vehicles that have been around for a little bu, a little bit, particularly the, what is it, 2013 Mack, the one that Jack drives, it's slated to be out, to go out sandblasted this year, right?
It's a hope, yeah.
That a tune of what, five, six thousand, because we don't have a wash bay, the salt, the sand, it just collects on these vehicles, and, you know, life expectancy that, which we determined would be on these trucks is fifteen years, with the understanding that halfway through, you're going to have to send it out to get it sandblasted, having a stainless steel body on it reduces the amount of maintenance you would have to do as far as sandblasting and painting the dump body on the vehicle, so, the life of the stainless steel body is twice that of a regular steel body. Now, that still doesn't, you know, you're still going to have to do some maintenance to the frame and the rest of the vehicle, but not to the dump body itself, should it, you know, if it comes with a stainless steel.
So dump bodies can get moved from truck to truck?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if you get.
If they all are interchangeable size, and.
Well, okay, so that, that was the question of, is, you're saying you get twice the lifespan?
So theoretically, if we wanted to get another truck without a dump body, you could take that one, when it comes time to take that one in, move it on the next truck, again, it all can.
Yeah, so I mean.
Depends on what kind of shape it's in after.
I'm not, I'm not arguing, it's just kind of like, it's a moot point if you're, if you're not sure you're going to be able to use it for twice.
Yeah, no, unless the, the dimensions of these trucks have changed so much within the time period of fifteen years, when this one is slated to be replaced, I don't see that happening, that being said, I mean, again, you don't know what, you know, what could happen in fifteen years to a dump body, dent, you know, whatever, that being said, I certainly agree with Sean with some of the changes that he has made, but when I originally scoped this vehicle out, it was included, the dump body, and I had everything set at 225, but, you know, there's been some changes and whatever, which will drive the cost up, I, I understand that.
What are the different fenders?
The poly fenders are for, they go over the rear tires, and basically that helps keeps the dirt and everything getting kicked up inside, or, you know, you, you see mudflats in the back, you've got the fenders that go over it, so it keeps everything inside the, the wheel.
Off the frame and stuff.
Well, I mean, it doesn't totally take it off the frame, but it reduces it, yeah.
But there's our point there is to reduce that effect.
And what does the central greaser do? Is that a standard component?
No, no, that right there will actually save time, you will not have to climb up inside the truck to grease the, the sander in its different spots, when you have one location to do it, that'll save time, and reduces the risk of someone getting hurt, slipping and falling, and what have you, by climbing up and over into this, into these trucks, and, these sanders that they have for these, these Mack trucks, there's not a lot of room in them to begin with, once they're in place, so, that actually is a good idea, having that in place. So that actually is a good idea, having that in place.
Any other questions?
He forgets he's in charge sometimes.
I know he does, yeah. But you notice how nicely I sit here and don't say anything?
No, I was writing notes. All right, well, it seems like that's the limit of the discussion, so it looks like you basically need a motion from us. You need a vote. So...
I'll make a motion that the select board authorize the following as recommended by the Public Works Department. Purchase of a CAT excavator and trailer for $137,400 with fund balance as authorized by town meeting and purchase of a Mack dump truck and setup for $237,000 with $225,000 from the Highway Vehicle Reserve Fund and $12,000 from the one-time SB 38 highway appropriation.
Do I have a second? Any more discussion?
No, I think everything has been said in regards to the truck. I'm not happy in regards to the overcost on this vehicle. Especially where I've already had this thing planned out and came within the budget of which the town has voted on. But we do need this truck because if you see on the other page, we've got that six-wheeler International there that's sitting there that is leaking like a sieve and barely even passed inspection.
Well, just before we go on this, these three items that are going to be for sale, they're probably not going to get a lot of money, are they?
It won't generate enough money to cover the cost of the...
12,000.
Right, no, no.
If you look at the, for the excavator, we're 18,000 under budget on that side. So between the excavator and the dump truck, we're still a few thousand under budget.
Well, the thing is that the 18,000 or whatever that dollar amount is is specifically for that excavator. Can't use it to put it towards the truck.
No, no, I get that, but in terms of dollars out of the town's pocket, you know, we're still under budget from what we had expected to spend on the total package for both vehicles. We're certainly not exceeding what town meeting authorized.
I'll withdraw the motion and we can vote on them individually if you like.
No, no, I mean, we need the truck. So I'm not going to allow my thoughts to prevent the highway department to get a piece of equipment that is much needed. So I am going to reluctantly support this overcost on this truck.
Good. So your motion's still live?
Motion stands.
Motion stands and your second still stands? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Matt's here. Courtney's still here, still awake. All right.
Do we have to have a big discussion about these or can we just...
Oh, forgot about that. Do we want to...
Yeah, if you're willing to turn that stuff loose, we just need a quick vote and we'll take care of it.
It is going, right?
Yes, they're going.
I'll make a motion that the select board authorizes the sale of the following surplus equipment. E-2020 sander, 2001 international plow truck, and dump body tailgate.
What's that dump body tailgate to?
I think it's from the International.
I second it.
If it's from the Mack, we'll keep it, but they've had that discussion already, yeah. Could be older. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? In unanimous. All right. Now Courtney and Matt, come on up.
I'm down.
Come on down.
I've already done it.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks. We're back here now finally to try and move this to the next step forward. I guess the next step is the proposal that we have for, to begin excavation is the one on top, which is from Ted Bantus. This is the one that you've seen before, John. This is going to be new to you, but it went around back, what was it, the January meeting where I came in on? For reference, I gave you the two quotes that we had previously from the other two companies that bid on it, which was the Andrews Construction, the Severino. Those were quotes based on the full project from them. And they've had the project, the scaled-down project for the last month trying to pare those quote down, and both of them came back and said that they're just too busy to do it. But if you look at their original quote versus Ted's original quote, which I don't have and don't print up, they were still well above anything that Ted has. So our recommendation for you guys to decide on if you want to go forward is to go forward with Ted Bantus and authorize or talk about, I guess, how you want to run the construction project. Now, this is a town project. We're just volunteers here trying to get the information to you and get you the right stuff so that you can do it. I volunteered to work with however you want to set it up. And then Gary Cowan back here has also volunteered his time over the summertime for however we want to set up to kind of help whichever selectmen or however you want to decide your committee to move forward with this project. You vote to move forward with the project.
Yeah. So the ultimate goal is to make a decision and to hopefully be able to start to break ground in August.
We do have, should we decide to go with Ted Bantus, he is, he does have availability in August to break ground for us. And he's been out to the field. He's met with Chris before. He's been out there at least three times as we've gone through the bid. After we got the initial round of bids, which you're looking at two of the three of them, just based on what we know in the industry and Gary working with him before, he's about the right-sized contractor that we need for this project. So we've gone back to him and we've worked with him several times. He's come out to the project to try and scale this down to something that he could do and that that would benefit within the new budget that we have, assuming that it's a budget.
So let's talk just a little bit about, kind of like the project management process about it, of the project. So as Matt said, Matt is graciously continuing to be willing to volunteer to keep, you know, help oversee this phase of the project, Gary as well. There was a third person.
Well, Barry is still on board also.
Barry, right.
As an engineer. And then Rick Bacon, who lives in town, is also an environmental engineer who's volunteered to come and help us out and do whatever we need also. So we still have the same kind of core support team or design team that we had before between a civil engineer, an environmental engineer, somebody who actually knows how to build baseball fields, and somebody who is dumb enough not to quit yet. We're still here and we're still all willing to move forward with this project and continue in that volunteer status as well as starting to branch out now with some other people.
Right. So the two aspects of it are, you know, first is the board comfortable with giving the green light? And then the second is the, kind of like the process management. So we've got all of that expertise, various folks. We've got Chris, who would of course be involved in it. What would be ideal is to have one member of this board have the authority to, you know, provide, you know, input whenever things, when there's a decision point that needs to be, to keep it moving forward. Because with projects like this, you know that something might come up and on-the-spot decisions have to be made and we can't wait for two weeks until this board gets together. So certainly, you know, these guys will provide the right guidance, Chris will provide the right guidance, but there needs to be somebody from our board who can represent and just, you know, in consultation with Chris, say yes, you know, go ahead. Of course, if there was anything major, significant, which would not happen, like somebody coming back and saying we need 50,000 more. That's not going to happen. So those are the two key concepts for tonight.
Now, given that you've got a grasp of this project, having been involved with it for so long, would you be willing to co-manage this on behalf of the board?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah?
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, so I think the first, I think, let's take the first question. The first question is, given the estimates and the recommendation from the committee that we go with Ted Bantus, are you guys comfortable with giving the green light on that?
I have some questions about his proposal under where it says the exclusions. I mean, it's great to see he's under everybody else, but isn't the budget for this 300?
So this is the rough grading portion of it that we're trying to get green-lighted for him to do. So, and I'm sorry you missed out on the discussion before that had happened, and I came straight from work, so I had another printout that had the prices of the infield mix. So we basically have the rough grading and we're doing this as cheap as possible. So we have the rough grading, backstops, infield mix, and grass seed. And that's what we're going to get for $298,000. So when you look at the exclusions, you know, the...
So that's the 40,000 that's going to be added on to those 259 number.
That's correct, yes. So it's 12,000 each for a backstop, comes in at a cost of about 24,000. If you'll give me just a second, I'll look it up here. The final grading, which is like the laser grading, is going to be about $3,000. Infield mix is going to be about 5,700, another 4,500 to rake and seed, put the grass seed out, and then again, about 12,000 each for the backstops is 24,000. So that's going to be kind of that amount that brings it up to the $300,000, which is the amount we targeted as the minimum amount that we needed just to put children on the field in a year and a half once the grass seed grows in. You know, maybe two if depending on how much raking we get or not.
Why August?
That's his earliest availability. We had him lined up for May back in October, but we couldn't get the funding, we couldn't get the timing and the funding and everything down. And, you know, he's been, he's been actually working very well with us to slip it as much as he can and still keep his schedule full and not punt us into next year. And again, Andrews and Severino, they both looked at it and they said we're just too full. We can't even, they didn't even want to rebid it for us.
That gets us planting seed this fall.
Depending on, depending on how long it takes Ted to do it, yeah. Ideally, we're throwing the grass seed down in this fall and I'll punt those questions to my grass seed expert back there. But yeah, the ideal time to plant the grass seed would be in the fall and then it'll grow all next year and we're planting on it by spring of '21. Does that sound right?
All goes well.
All goes well. Now, and that's not to say that that's a done deal, like, so we're still going to have a fundraising committee still working with some corporate funding to try and then move into an irrigation system or, in addition to designing out the, we talked about what the pavilion and everything else. So this isn't meant to be a done deal where we're going to throw our hands and walk away on this. I think the next goal with the corporate fundraising needs to be an irrigation system to get the grass seed to grow. And then we also talked about, we had a meeting just with a volunteer in town who was looking at designing a pavilion for us. Again, volunteer services.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's part of why Courtney is here. Courtney is starting to take a more active role in this, which makes me really, really happy. And she is aware of a lot of funding, you know, like state grants and things like that that we can start to go after, including things that are more geared toward some of the other folks in town who aren't the kids that are playing sports. So making it more of a true community location, not just a baseball field.
Yeah, there's some organizations with the hiking trails that Courtney had access to that...
Yep, right, exactly, exactly.
Do you still have grant writing support?
We do, yeah. Joke orders is still on board. In fact, the MLB grant opens up again so that we can reapply for that. Our feedback on the MLB grant was that they didn't want to do multi-use fields, but we can go back at them and maybe add another piece on, maybe attack an irrigation portion of it. You know, there's that one. There's a stony field. They're doing like a, they're doing a big thing in Portsmouth for organic field management that they're donating some money into, so they're going to talk to them. Someone at Opening Day Baseball the other day said that the Lee Raceway had a conversation with one of the people over there who might be interested in some sponsorship. So we're not giving up on, this isn't to say that we went to town meeting, we got our money and we're good. We're not giving up on the rest of it to keep the project moving forward, assuming that that's what you want.
I have some other folks that are volunteering to kind of take a lead on another fundraising type of committee, which I would see would feed into the corporate sponsorships as well. We've been, we've been doing this for two years, three years?
At least three.
Now, a lot of time and energy and homework and research and planning and volunteer expertise has gone into this, so I would love to see this board give Matt and Gary the green light tonight to move forward with Ted Bantus and get this project going.
And I don't mean to put it up against the wall, but he has held us off enough this summer or kept the slot open enough for this summer that should you decide not to go forward with it, then we're looking at not breaking ground until next summer. So we pushed the entire thing back an entire, another year, which is, if that's your decision.
Yeah, and this is...
We've already kicked the can down the road, not kicked the can, but we've spent enough time studying it. I think it's probably time for a decision one way or the other on what we're doing here.
Yeah, not only that, but this is a project that's been supported overwhelmingly by the community. The first time we went and asked for $200,000 and this time, when we came back and asked for $100,000, there's overwhelming support for it. So there's support, the homework's been done, a lot of volunteer expertise has gone into it, and, you know, they've done a good job getting multiple quotes.
What's the name of the company that you're considering?
It's Ted Bantus Excavating.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
Any other questions, discussion, comments, thoughts? You say you're missing one?
Missing, no, I had another piece of paper, the one that talked about the price of the infield mix, the backstops are estimates for the other one. That was the piece of paper I didn't have with me.
Is that part of this quote?
No, it's, that is numbers that we put together as the committee, you know, numbers that we went out and got.
You feel confident with those numbers?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
All right, well, how would we want to do this?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, you, do you want to see a contract before it comes, before it goes? You want to...
Does the whole board have to see the contract or can we empower Chris to...
Enter it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll certainly show it to you, but just a question of meeting schedules and things.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You can, if you want to authorize me to sign it for a dollar amount, I'd certainly share it with you before we got that far, but if the meeting schedule doesn't line up, you know, give you an opportunity to hit the brakes on it if you wish, but otherwise keep moving.
Yeah, keep momentum rather than waiting for our meeting schedule.
But if there's something that you want to discuss, I'd certainly hold off if that's what we need to do.
I'm absolutely good with this except for the one fact that your budget's tight.
Yeah, we're doing it on minimum that we got. You know, yeah.
I hope it all goes according to plan.
I do.
Well, there is, there is no over-budget because there is no money.
You know, if not, we'll have the town out there with rakes and like our, you know, like our wood chip pile here.
Yeah, I was just thinking in project management world, they usually tell you to plan on 10 to 15% contingency funds.
Yeah.
And you don't have that, so...
That's why I'm just addressing that.
What, yeah, what are you going to leave out if things go awry?
Well, the easiest thing to leave out is the backstops, you know...
Yeah, keep momentum rather than waiting for our meeting schedule.
But if there's something that you want to discuss, I'd certainly hold off if that's what we need to do.
I'm actually good with this except for the one fact that your budget's tight.
Yeah, we're doing it on minimum that we got, you know, yeah.
I hope it all goes forward to plan?
Me too.
Well, there is no over-budget because there is not money.
You know, if not, we'll have the town out there with rakes and like our woodchip pile here.
Yeah, I was just thinking, in project management world, they usually tell you to plan on 10 to 15% contingency funds. And you don't have that, so...
That's why I'm just addressing that.
What, yeah, what are you going to leave out if things go awry?
Well, the easiest thing to leave out is the backstops. You know, the hard part right now is getting the ground shaped into the appropriate space because that's what Ted does. You know, that's the bulk of this amount of money, is getting the ground shaped, getting it, meeting the environmental statement that we had to submit to the state as far as drainage runoff, that kind of stuff. So that piece of it, the backstops, is $24,000, which is approximately, you know, just under 10% of what Ted's budget is. So if we have to leave off the backstops and push those down or go to secure additional funding or we work towards our fundraising goal to be backstops, then that's what it's going to have to come out of. That's an easy thing to pull out of the final piece.
Yeah, no, it sounds logical because it's, the backstops aren't a critical path item for the dirt work.
Right. And if nothing else, it turns into a soccer field until we can get the back... Or a lacrosse field until the backstops go up, yeah. But again, this is going to be in conjunction with fundraising that's hopefully going to continue all summer long. There's a lot of momentum out in town to go out and get some of that corporate fundraising. And then, you know, if we have to pull those backstops for our contingency fund, then now our fundraising goes to backstops.
Anything else? Questions? Got a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with Phase One construction of Marston Complex and to authorize Chris Sterndale to enter into agreement with Ted Bantus Excavating on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Is there anything about that? So when he sees the contract? Can we just have a quick discussion about seeing a contract?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I didn't say that explicitly, but...
What?
Okay.
I'm just asking because that was...
No, I won't sign until you see it, yeah.
He just wouldn't, it's normal course of business, yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Abstention?
Okay, so therefore then, are you comfortable with the process that has been recommended where Gary and Gary and Barry and Matt continue to, you know, lead the project with Chris providing guidance and counsel and me representing the board?
Full managing, yeah.
Are you guys all good with that?
I am.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind seeing a schedule of, you know, milestones, just...
Right, yep. And I know that was some of the feedback from before and we're definitely going to work on that, you know. That was part of bringing Courtney in on it also as a more direct representative with the town too, that she's got access to the website, the town website now, and I'll do a better job giving, feeding her information, giving you guys the feedback that you need so that it doesn't seem like I'm coming out of left field like I did back in October.
Yeah, and she's got great ideas. Very, very excited.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask for a full-blown project plan, but something organized and logical.
There definitely needs to be more communication. That was some, that was appropriate feedback for me and I will work on it.
Get all those kids in the after-school program out working in the field, huh?
That's right, well, having building trails.
I was saying, get them all a little shovel and put them to work.
Why are you sitting here? How is, I mean, I see the pile still.
Yes, we're still working on it.
But your volunteers are good to spread it, is that what you're...
Yes, still. I know Ben was helping us a little bit with that. Any help we can get would be awesome. We just need it moved to different sides of the playground so that's easier to spread. We still have a little bit of depth to go and we're almost there.
You mean people or machinery?
Until then, it's Courtney's fault.
People and machinery.
Mount Courtney.
Yes.
Mount Courtney.
Just getting down and down and spreading, so any help we can get would be...
Have you thought about picking it like a one afternoon and trying to get as many people there as possible or...
That's definitely a good idea. We can put that out.
Yeah, set a time.
Try to get another cleanup crew to help, try to do that so we can organize that before summer.
That's why I understand. Of course it's there. Longer it's just there is a big pile. The better news spread.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, do we want to have any action items for our next meeting? Anything outstanding that we need to...
What'd you say? Oh, yeah, the goals.
Yeah, yeah, apart from that, yeah. Okay. And since we have, still have a visitor, would you like to come up and bring some business to the board?
Wait, but I feel that after, I wonder if someone should say play ball.
We're a little bit away from that, Steve.
Oh, we're definitely a step towards it.
I sent out an email last week to the members who I had contact information for and to Chris regarding... I get a lot of questions from people all over the place because I spend so much time with the town. And this one, I agreed to look into, I probably should not, but had to do with the road, the police vehicles being rotated out, possibility of it going to the Highway Department? Is that... I hadn't heard any discussion about it. Is that so?
Yeah, we were basically going to make, the idea is to take one of those old police cruisers that we wouldn't get a lot of money for anyways.
I understand that.
And turn it into an administrative vehicle so we don't have to use like a plow truck for the...
Thing is, we got many more vehicles than we have employees. So sending another vehicle over to the Highway Department, I guess that was the question that I, that I've gotten from a couple of people and I said, "Well, I'll ask." And so that is in the work, so to speak. Okay, that's really all I need to know.
Just so you know, I mean, the Highway Director has been, you know, filling the ranks within the Highway Department, adding personnel. We just hired someone not long ago.
I understand that, which I think is great. Got no problem with that. The vehicle, we got two little dump trucks, you know, how far is the Road Agent going to have to go, or the Public Works Director going to have to go? Surrounding towns, maybe in town, but that's, I don't want to get into that discussion as far as, you know, what kind of vehicle he needs to do that. But, and I am, I am going to try to stay, I'm trying to advise people, listen, call the Board of Select, call the office and contact the selectmen or Chris or whatever you need to do, you know, ask your own questions, don't ask me to come. I told this guy, "Look into it," next thing, "Did you get an answer for me about this?" No.
You got to stop hanging out at liars, Charlie.
I don't, yeah, I don't go down, I don't get into those discussions as long as I never have, but...
Next thing you know, they're going to ask you to run for the board.
Can't do it. It's very hard, it was very hard walking away after all those years, just trying to let it, let it go. And I have no problem asking a question if I feel is an issue. Something else I was going to say, oh, I was a little peeved that I didn't get a response from anybody. It's been a week, so. And I am, now...
Yeah, you didn't get it.
No, I don't have your contact information, John. I don't have yours or Ben's.
I guess we're safe.
It's going to be, you know, initials at Nottingham-nH.gov.
You're right.
Yeah, I'm going to read that one. I was chewing on that whole notion, trying to think of what, you know, how to address that and then...
We at least don't do...
I mean, I know as well as anybody, you know, no matter what you do, you're, half of the people are going to think you're wrong, the other people thinking, "That's good." The feedback, I have had some feedback on the New Road Agent and it's been positive, so for what that's worth. I haven't met the man yet, I'm going to stop in there one of these days and introduce him, introduce myself to him, but... That's all, that's simple. I'll see this person on Wednesday and let him know that, yes, that's probably going to happen. We used to do that in the past with the police cars and to the fire department. Now they got their own, you know, pickup truck. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Charlie, thanks for talking.
I said, and I will try to tell people, listen, you need to know, you can ask just as well as I can ask. For the most part, the information is on the website, but...
Yes, it is.
Well, I said, there's two contacts on there that I didn't see, so anyway, thanks.
Do you want them while you're here? Do you want those email addresses while you're here?
You can actually get them on the website.
I'll stop down the office, I'll call whoever's in the office can answer that question.
You can actually find your emails on the website.
Correct.
Oh, they are?
Are they there now?
I know mine.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'll recheck. Just your first, your first initial, last name, at Nottingham-nH.
Yep. Dot gov, yeah, yeah.
Thanks again.
Good night, Charlie.
Good night, Charlie. All right, do we have anything for non-public?
I don't.
Anything else? Round robin, round table? Nothing?
Nothing.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to, what's the...
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, unanimous. Have a good night, everybody.
Send your folders back, if you would.
Just the folders?
Just the folders.
Not the content?
I don't want the contents. No worries. Is Courtney still here? Do you think, or she...